Here. Ready?
There.
Okay, it's 5:30. We're going to get started. Welcome, everybody, to the December 16th, 2024 City Council meeting. I'd like to ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Councillor Long.
Present.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Present.
Councillor Runyon.
Present.
Councillor Randall.
Present.
Councillor Richardson.
Present.
Mayor Mays.
President. Item three is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Councilman Rod Runyon to please lead us in the pledge.
Stand if you're physically able. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councillor Runyon. Item four is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Councillor Long and seconded by Councillor Randall to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item five is a proclamation certifying the results of the November 5th, 2024 City Council election. Should I read this in its entirety? That's what I'm.
Yes, please.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to read. It's not very long, so. Whereas at the general election held at the state of Oregon on November 5th, 2024, in the DOWS, there was submitted to the voters the candidates for office of councillor position number two, councillor position number four, and councillor position number five. Whereas the city council of the city of the DOWS has canvassed the results of said election and has found as follows. Councillor, position number two, total votes cast, 4,068. Ben Ring got 4,001 votes, write-in 67. Councillor, position number four, Deborah Liddell Gomez received 2,207. Dan Richardson received 3,328, 23 write-in votes, total votes cast, 5,558. Councillor, position number five, total votes cast, 4,290. Rod Runyon received 4,149, write-in votes, 141. Now therefore, I, Richard A. Mays, Mayor of the city of the DOWS, do hereby proclaim at the general election held on November 5th, 2024, the following. One, Ben Ring was elected councillor position number two of the city of the DOWS. Dan Richardson was elected councillor position number four of the city of the DOWS. And Rod Runyon was elected as councillor position number five of the city of the DOWS. Signed and dated at the DOWS, Oregon, the 16th day of December, 2024. I don't believe a vote is necessary on this.
Correct.
Otherwise, I would suspect Councillor Runyon and Councillor Richardson may vote against the proclamation. Okay. Thank you for your indulgence. Item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member, who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for a city council consideration. Is there anybody in the audience, or do we have anybody signed up to speak before the city council on any subject which is not on the agenda? Okay, we have none. Item seven, city manager's report. Mr. Cleaves.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask Dr. Lance to come up to the table here really briefly for Councillor Richardson's benefit. Oh, no, just right here at the table here, and if Amy can help with the camera there. I wanted to take just a quick moment to introduce everybody here to Dr. Liz Lance. Commissioner, Councillor Runyon and Randall both know Dr. Lance, but she is the new administrator, executive director for Q Life. And so she's been with us for two and a half whole months, maybe?
Less than.
Less than that. And she brings a wealth of experience and has really dove into Q Life already, and especially some of the upcoming grant opportunities that we have here. So as you know, I've been serving as the administrator for a little while now in the spare time that I have available, but Dr. Lance will be joining us a full 40 hours a week and really will take Q Life to that next level. And so I just wanted to introduce her. And did you have any comments you wanted to say briefly?
No specific comments, but thank you. Nice to see you all, and I look forward to serving our area and bringing broadband where it should be at every household.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, where you came from?
Sure. I've spent just over the last 10 years building technology companies in building data centers in the technology space and have been living in this area for almost five years now, working remotely, of course. And so when this opportunity became available, I was really looking for an opportunity to work in our community, not just hiding in the woods, working on something that may or may not matter. So this is really important because the reason I was able to move to this area is because there was broadband at the end of a dirt road. So it's very important to me, and I wish everyone to get to experience how rich life can be in a smaller community, and it's been made available by broadband for me.
Great. Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to working with you and hope you make another appearance at least before the city council. Let us know what's going on with Q Life.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Lance.
Thank you.
I would just like to commend her on how quickly you got up to speed. It was just really, it's really been amazing watching the change and the knowledge coming forward and whatnot.
Thank you, Councillor Runyon.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, some of the other items I had this evening, just a brief update as I try and keep it that way, but I wanted to update the council on some of my next steps and intentions now that the TLT, Transient Lodging Tax Ordinance, has passed. As we've discussed previously, I intend to move forward with issuing an RFQ for our tourism services contract. This is part of our contract review process and due diligence effort whenever we have a contractor, a contract approaching expiration. As the council knows, the DOWS Area Chamber of Commerce has been fulfilling these duties very well for many years. This presents a great opportunity to review and update that scope of work and the services contract for next year. Part of this effort will be the formation of an ad hoc review committee to review the responses that we receive under the RFQ or Request for Qualifications. And likewise, we also intend to form an ad hoc sign code review committee at the start of the new year to help facilitate the review of our sign code as we discussed earlier this year, and then again at part of our goal-setting process. So just two FYIs that those ad hoc committees are coming down the pipeline. Wanted to provide a brief update on the EDA grant for the College Hanger and Business Park over at the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport. We were successful in receiving an additional 2.2 million from the EDA IRC, the Investment Review Committee. This did not quite fulfill the gap that the project was facing, but through some scope changes and revisions, we were able to get that down to a manageable level. Click Attack County Public Works will be moving forward in the coming weeks and months with a bid document for the civil infrastructure at the airport, and this will give us better information and harder data on what the budget may look like. And late last week on Friday, several of us met with a representative from Congressman Bence's office. This follows on a visit from the congressman, I think, a few months ago. He toured our facility here and the various projects we have, and that was a direct outreach or outcome from the community outreach team trips back to DC. So it's good to follow up with them. And that's my report.
Great. Thank you. Item eight is city council reports. We'll start with Councillor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a whole lot, though. I will say we've made good progress on the Federal Street Plaza Committee or Ad hoc Committee. We met a week and a half ago, and our consultant gave us half a dozen very preliminary design sketches. And we're moving forward and reviewing those and giving feedback and iterating through, and we expect sometime this winter and early in the new year to be sharing those more widely with the public and getting some feedback that way.
Thank you. Next, Councillor Runyon.
Mr. Mayor, I'm proud to report that I have not had one outside meeting for the last six days. Thank you.
Thank you for that brief report. Councillor Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On December 11th, the Tri-County Hazardous Waste and Recycling Program Steering Committee met, where we bid farewell to the outgoing chair and County Commissioner Steve Kramer, be replaced by incoming Phil Brady. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councillor Long.
So last month, there was no urban renewal agency meeting because it needed, the information needed to come before city council, which it did last meeting. And so our next urban renewal agency meeting will be tomorrow night here in council chambers at 5:30 and also available online. And that's my report.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Well, it looks like nothing in the past week, but we have urban coming up tomorrow night. On the 18th, we have a citywide gathering and a party for employees that I plan to be at. And Saturday, bell ringing for Lions Club. That's it.
I have a couple of things I'd like to announce. You know, as most of you probably know, one of my goals as mayor was to improve the appearance of the city, and that was led by the creation of the Beautification and Tree Committee for, I guess it's been six years. And I thought the city council and the community might be interested in a list of improvement projects just during this calendar year, 2024, that has been accomplished with the assistance of not only the Beautification Committee in the city, but also some other local agencies, including, of course, that committee. There, I want to quickly list 13 of them. First, the new trash cans downtown, and that was done with the cooperation of the DOWS disposal and the Beautification Committee. Second, the welcome to the Dow signs, exit 3083 on the west side of town, and also by the roundabout, again with the cooperation of the committee and with the community, excuse me, the Columbia Gorge Community College, who helped us with the work on the, on the signs. Third is the Planner Box on Union Street. Fourth, the Downtown Trees. Fifth, Tree Grants. We've had two rounds of those led by the Beautification and Tree Committee that, in my understanding is, have been very successful. Seventh is the Post Office Beautification Project, which is going on just west of their facility. And our city clerk has been very instrumental in getting that going. Sixth is the two-owned city triangles at Kelly and 12th, and also at Sixth and Trevitt. The Beautification Committee and the Community Gorge Community College helped and assisted with those two projects. Eighth is the refurbishing of the downtown Christmas decorations, the stars in the trees. Two agencies helped the city with that project, the Northern Wasco PUD and the Northern Wasco Parks and Recreation District. Ninth is the library beautification and, and actually the State Office Building and the library have done a lot of painting and landscaping around their facility, their two respective facilities. Tenth is the People's Forge Project Sculpture on Union Street near Lewis and Clark Park that was done with the cooperation of the DOWS Art Center. Eleventh is the fountain at Lewis and Clark Park, which is now back functioning properly. Twelfth is the Yard of the Month. The Beautification and Tree Committee have done that every month and has been a very successful program. And finally, the light capsule at the Getchel Building, which was done with the city and with the Urban Renewal Agency. So we also be very proud of a lot of the work. A lot of the work that has been done with, in appreciation with the city staff and our community partners, the DOWS disposal, the Community College, the PUD, the Parks and Rec District, the library, the DOWS Art Center, the Urban Renewal, and a special shout out to the Public Works Department of the city, who did a lot of the work and assisted the city in all this. Thanks very much, Public Works.
Mayor Mays, may I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I was downtown noticing, in fact, coming in tonight, how vibrant the lights look in the downtown corridor. I was looking and crossed or passed the trash cans. I think Gary Honold was instrumental in getting those, but they look so great. And my comment is that each of these little projects may not seem much in itself, but when you put them all in the total, our city looks much better and is improving, and thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Finally, it's that time of the year where I'll be meeting with each of you councillors individually to talk to you about your, about the committees and the liaisons that have to be made for 2025 and beyond. To remind you, we have council liaisons on the airport commission, the community outreach team, Sister Cities, Q Life, the Traffic and Safety Committee, Historic Landmarks Committee, Lip Sick, and perhaps Councillor Runyon can help us with what that stands for, the Household Hazardous Waste and the Urban Renewal Agency. So if I haven't left anything out, I will be getting with each of you, so start thinking about the plans for 2024 and what your preferences and wishes might be. With that, thank you very much for listening. We'll move on to item.
Nine.
By the way, Mr. Mayor, Local Public Safety Coordinating Council.
Thank you. I knew you'd know. Okay, item nine is a public hearing. We're going to be considering a reimbursement district for East Ninth Street Sanitary Sewer Main Improvements. Now is the time specified for the council to conduct a public hearing to consider the matter of adoption of Resolution Number 24-034, Resolution Finalizing Fees for the East Ninth Street Sanitary Sewer Main Improvements Reimbursement District. On September 11th, 2023, the city council held an initial informational public hearing before adopting Resolution Number 23-033 to form the East Ninth Street Sanitary Sewer Main Improvements Reimbursement District. The DOWS Municipal Code 2.12.050 requires this second informational public hearing tonight when reimbursement districts are formed prior to construction of the improvements. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to inform the public and give the opportunity for any person to comment on the finalization of the fees associated with the reimbursement district. Anyone whom wishes to testify must be recognized by me before testifying. When I recognize you, please proceed to the microphone and state your name, mailing address for the record. The hearing is also required to be recorded. Generally, the public hearing procedure will go as follows. Prior to the public hearing, we will begin with a staff report and any questions the council may have for staff. Next, I will ask for testimony from any proponents of the proposed fee finalization for the reimbursement district. Then I will ask for testimony from any opponents of the proposed fee finalization for the reimbursement district. Finally, I'll ask for testimony from anyone who wishes to offer relevant testimony or ask relevant questions. To expedite the hearing, councillors may ask questions of persons as they testify. When this process has been concluded, I will close the public testimony, and the council will deliberate toward a decision. These are the rules. Are there any questions? Okay. With that, I'm opening the public hearing. May we please have a staff report from our Director of Public Works, Mr. Dave Anderson?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I think you just gave about half my staff report, so this might go pretty quick. As you mentioned, in September of 2023, city council authorized the formation of a reimbursement street, of a reimbursement district for the East Ninth Street Sanitary Sewer Main Improvements. And at that time, construction on the project had not been completed. There was a conflict with some fiber optic line, and the district was formed with interim fees in place. The fiber optic line has been relocated, the conflict's been resolved, and the project has been completed. Final Public Works Director Report has been. Report has been prepared. That presents all the information relevant to the proposed reimbursement district and fees. It's attached to the staff report for you tonight. The project total cost ended up being $316,215.07. The new sewer main was constructed by City Public Works crews. We did make efforts to try to minimize the project costs, such as utilizing a larger excavator to deal with all the rock excavation that was involved in the project and reducing staffing on the project when we were undertaking rock excavation. The proposed reimbursement fee for new connections to the city sanitary sewer system within the reimbursement district is now $3,856.28 per new sewer unit. A sewer unit is the equivalent of one new single-family residence. It's possible, and in fact, likely, that some of the properties within this district are going to develop as multifamily dwellings. And by charging on a sewer unit basis, we're able to equitably allocate the cost of the project to those multifamily housing developments. Want to note that no homes or properties that previously had sewer service with the city are being assessed or charged in this project. Their costs to connect them were accounted for in the determination of the reimbursement fee. But again, those properties that had existing service are not charged under the reimbursement district. The proposed reimbursement district fee is $755.84 higher than the interim fee that was put into effect in 2023. And again, the additional cost is largely due to the large amount of rock excavation that was involved in the project. As Mayor mentioned, municipal code requires a public hearing to be conducted. Following the public hearing, the council may approve, reject, or modify the recommendations in the Public Works Director Report. All the property owners were notified of the scheduled public hearing at least 10 days in advance. We sent out notices by certified mail on the 3rd of December. 15 notices were sent. We've received confirmation of receipt for 10 of those 15 notices. Following the conclusion of the informational hearing, if council so desires, the attached Resolution Number 24-034 can be adopted, which finalizes the process of forming the reimbursement district for the city and establishing the reimbursement fee. And once formed, the reimbursement district exists for 15 years. The budget implications are that with adoption of Resolution Number 24-034, the city will recover some or all of its costs to install the new sanitary sewer main in East Ninth Street over time as properties develop and connect to the system. Property owners within the reimbursement district develop properties, they will pay a fee of $3,856.28 per new sewer unit as their share of the construction cost, and these costs are in addition to any sewer SDCs that are assessed. With that, it's staff's recommendation that the council move to adopt Resolution Number 24-034, establishing fees for the East Ninth Street Sanitary Sewer Main Improvements Reimbursement District.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the staff before I ask for public testimony? We'll get back to you to deliberate after we close the public hearing. Did I hear you just say that there was 15 parcels eligible?
There were 15 notices that were sent. I believe there's a total of 17 parcels, but there's some duplicate ownerships.
Okay, because I counted the number and it didn't come out to 15. Okay, good. So they would pay the 3,800 and the.
Change.
And change. And they would also pay an SDC.
Yes.
So that's around 5,000 and change.
Yeah, the SDC is 1789, so yes, 5,500.
What kind of, and you've notified everybody, are you concerned that five people didn't return their mail?
Not very, because this is the second time that we've brought this issue. We formed the district again a little over a year ago. So, and my recollection is I don't remember, I think the county had commented at that time because they had some property, and I think once they understood that there is no assessment until they're actually making an application to develop the property, I believe that concern was addressed. I think once we provide the clarifying information, and again, I'm trying to pull this from memory of that hearing, but I think once we provided that clarifying information, there was a resident that also commented with similar concerns. They were afraid they would be assessed whether they developed or created a new connection or not. Once we answered that question, I don't remember there being opposition to the district formation. And again, the council moved forward with the establishment of the district. Right now, all we're doing is finalizing the fee.
Right. Okay.
Nobody developed in that interim period, so nobody paid the lower fee. Everybody will be paying the same amount to connect to the system.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, sorry. Oh, Council Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Dave just answered this, but just to be explicit, Dave, the fee is assessed when somebody develops a property. They're not going to get a bill in the mail like next week, right?
That is correct. If there is no development of that property within the next 15 years and they make connection to the system, they never pay the fee.
Very good. I appreciate that. One other question I have, this is the sewer line, sanitary sewer line. Is there a parallel process for water connection?
There is. And we were actually, when we were here in September of 2013, the water system construction was already completed, and we finalized the reimbursement district process in that meeting for the water main.
Thanks for reminding me.
Any other questions?
Not a question, just to repeat one thing. No homes that had previously had city sanitary sewer service will be charged. Thank you.
That is correct. We considered that maintenance for the homes that already had service. They don't benefit from having a new sewer main. So anybody that already had sewer service was not, will not be assessed this fee.
I think that is the highlight of the story. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, does anyone wish to testify in favor of the proposed fee finalization for the reimbursement district? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here who would like to testify in favor of this project? Seeing none, does anyone wish to testify in opposition to the proposed fee finalization for the reimbursement district? Anybody? Okay, let the record show that no one is present that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to the proposed fee finalization for the reimbursement district. Does anyone wish to testify or ask questions on this matter, not in favor or in opposition? Once again, no one is coming forward. Do the city councilors feel they have enough information to make a decision?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and the council may now deliberate.
Seems pretty straightforward and brands of staff reports, so.
Good.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion then.
I'll make the motion. I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 24-034, establishing fees for the East Ninth Street Sanitary Sewer Main Improvements Reimbursement District.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Long and seconded by Council Runyon to approve.
24-034.
Yeah, reimbursement district for the East Ninth Street Sanitary Sewer Main Improvements. Is there any more discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or raise your hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Item 10A is consideration of an award for the Sixth Street Widening Contract. Mr. Dale McCabe is here to present the staff report.
Evening, Mayor and members of the council. The Sixth Street Widening Project is a project that will consist of installing the recommended improvements that were identified within the city's transportation system plan, also known as the TSP, the stormwater master plan, and also the wastewater facility master plan. The real driving force of the project, though, is those projects that were identified in the city's TSP. So those improvements will consist of installing a consistent section or a cross-section width on Sixth Street, located mainly between Snipe Street and Hostetler Street. We're actually going to go back to the drive approach that is located between the KFC Restaurant and the Sixth Street Station, used to be the old Kmart access, and will be actually beginning the alignment there because the sidewalk slightly skews out there in front of the KFC to narrow up over by Snipe Street. So we'll be constructing that consistent width from that location to the intersection of Sixth and Hostetler. So that, that cross-section width will consist of installing a new six-foot-wide sidewalk on the west side of Sixth Street, which is the developed property side. So it'll be a six-foot-wide sidewalk, a 10-foot-wide on-street parking strip, a seven-foot bike lane, a four-foot buffer strip, a 12-foot travel lane, a 14-foot center refuge lane or a center left turn lane, 12-foot travel lane, a three-foot buffer strip, a six-foot-wide bike lane on the east side, and then the existing gravel shoulder section will remain as it currently exists today. The other aspect of the transportation portion of the project will be installing, like I said, a new six-foot-wide sidewalk. Be installing new ADA ramps and new drive approaches to bring all those sidewalk facilities up to the current ADA standards and also filling in where there are missing segments of sidewalks. So we'll have a consistent sidewalk pedestrian path along that whole stretch there. In order to accommodate that extra width, we are going to have to acquire some additional right-of-way. It's an approximate 25-foot in width. We'll have to be obtaining that from three different parcels, which are actually owned by two different property owners. The acquisition of those right-of-way pieces are actually being covered later in tonight's meeting under Action Item 11D. So that will address that at that time. The sanitary sewer improvements that are occurring with this project is going to be upsizing a 12-inch sanitary sewer main to a 15-inch sanitary sewer main, and that segment will be located over there in front of the Sixth Street Station property frontage to about 150 feet north of the Snipes and Sixth Street intersection. The other aspect is the storm improvements. We'll be installing some catch basins, new catch basins throughout the project, also updating a couple of the stormwater outfalls that discharge into the center open ditch there between Sixth Street and High 84. But the real crux of the storm improvements are happening down at the intersection of Hostetler and Sixth Street. So with the widening of Sixth Street there at that location, those current ditches that are in front of Spooky's Restaurant and the old Credit Union there on the corner, those ditches are going to be eliminated, and the existing piping that's in that intersection is extremely shallow. It's like right underneath the surface of the roadway. And so we'll be actually removing those, most of those pipes in that location, constructing those at a deeper depth and upsizing them. And with that, we're going to have to install a new storm lift station where it will discharge, it will collect all of that and discharge into that open ditch as it currently does. And by installing that lift station and those deeper pipes, we're actually going to be able to eliminate the flooding that occurs at that intersection and under the ID4 overpass there at that location when we have a higher rain event or a higher snow melt event. So that should take care of that problem as well. So we advertised for the project, and we had a bid opening on November 14th, for which we received three responsive bids. We reviewed those and deemed all the bids complete. The apparent low responsive bid was submitted by Crestline Construction in the amount of $3,524,610.50. This project is to be funded with monies from a few different sources. The first source is that the city received a $922,200 all roads transportation safety, which is known as the Arts Grant from ODOT. That grant is budgeted within the Fund 13, and that grant does require a 7.78% match. Another source of funding for this project is from the fiscal year 2024 and 25 budget, from $2 million from the Enterprise Zone Funds in Fund 22 that have been allocated towards this project. And a remaining source for this project is that the city does have fund, budget, sorry, the city does have monies budgeted for in Fund 13 from the ODOT Surface Transportation Funds in the amount of $847,567. Those funds were previously identified for paving, doing like the fourth phase of the Scenic Drive Stabilization Project, which would be for paving the surface of Scenic Drive located between Jefferson Street and Esther Way. In those previous three phases where we did the retaining wall, we also did some utility upgrades. One of the, I think it was the second phase, the contractor decided that the best alternative for them for doing the trench repairs was to do a skin patch up there over the entire width of the road. That has held up better than what we had thought it was going to. So the road surface there is still in pretty good condition. So we're looking at deferring that Phase Four portion of that project to a later date and utilize those monies that were available for that project for this project. So with those three kinds of sources, that totals amount budgeted for this project of $3,769,767, and that then gives us adequate funds for this project. So with that, staff's recommendation is to request that the City Council authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Crestline Construction for the Sixth Street Widening Contract Number 2024-010 in an amount not to exceed $3,524,610.50.
Okay, any questions by the city council?
I need a clarification. You said the underpass, there was flooding, and I noticed there's flooding going by Taco Bell under that. And how about the other one at Hostetler?
That's what this lift station will be taking care of is the one at Hostetler.
Okay. Any proposals to clarify or to take away the flooding at the other location?
The other location already has an updated storm system that ODOT did several years ago. And with the grades that fall into the existing ditch system, that system discharges over to that pond. So it crosses under the railroad tracks and it crosses, it discharges into the pond that's located over by Barge Way, the gymnastics center in the Barge Way Restaurant, and that's where it discharges. So those grades are all pretty well set. And so the largest size pipes that they could get in the ground at that location are already in place. So that flooding, short of having another lift station or something that to put piping deeper, it's going to remain as it is.
Understood.
Other questions for Mr. McCabe? Anybody like to make a motion?
Mayor Mays, I can go ahead and do that. Mayor Mays, I can go ahead and do that. So to authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Crestline Construction for the Sixth Street Widening Contract Number 2024-010 in an amount not to exceed $3,524,610.50.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It moved by Council McGlaughlin and seconded by Council Randall to enter into a contract with Crestline for the Sixth Street Widening Project. Is there any more discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 11A is consideration of a resolution establishing a policy for the appropriation of revenues from our strategic investment program. Mr. Clebs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've talked quite a bit about the strategic investment program and the agreement we have with Design LLC over the course of the year, but it's all just briefly summarized here. We have an agreement in place that covers up to two data centers and provides a tax abatement to each of those data centers for up to 15 years. And in exchange, there are four different revenue streams under that agreement in addition to the job creation and investment made in the community. Just for review, those four different components are the initial payment, which is a one-time payment made to the city and county per data center of $3 million. There are property taxes, which is based on the value of the development and a matrix developed by Business Oregon. There's a community service fee, which is calculated at 25% of the entity's tax savings in a particular year. And then there's the guaranteed annual payment, which is a formula based on the ultimate combination of payments made for each of the data centers equalling 50 and 60%. These funds are distributed in different ways. The initial payment and the guaranteed annual payment are distributed to the city and county, whereas the property taxes and the community service fee, in effect, will be distributed to all the districts that levy taxes at the development site. We had a very robust process this year with joint work, work sessions with Wasco County to discuss potential uses of these funds and to engage the community and other entities in that process. One of the efforts was a survey that the city and county put out to the community on the potential uses of these funds, which resulted in 365 different responses. In the staff report, some of the general themes are summarized for you there, improving school facilities, general tax fee and rate relief, infrastructure development, public safety, general economic development, housing, and addressing homelessness. In addition to this effort focused on SIP, we also engaged in a very robust process to review and update the city's water master plan. This process identified significant water infrastructure needs due to generational end-of-life dynamics with many of our infrastructure systems. Some of these projects include what we've, you know, casual be, casually been referring to as the big three with our Wicks Water Treatment Plant, the transmission lines from the treatment plant to town, and the expansion of the Crow Creek Dam. During those work sessions and as a result of the input we received during the SIP work sessions, there was a strong focus and, and desire to use some of these SIP revenues to reduce the amount of necessary water increases that we'll be looking at in the future and I will say just in the next couple of months. And so considering these different processes, the very robust effort that we did this year at the city council level, at the staff level, and in partnership with the county, and now moving forward with the city direction, staff recommends that council adopt the resolution included in your packet detailing the following budget guidance. This is really helpful for us to memorialize this direction. And as we're at the end of December here, we'll be embarking on our budget process for fiscal year 25, 26 coming right up. So this guidance will be very helpful. It's proposed that the initial payment as a one-time payment and at this time will be reserved for future special projects, and this will be budgeted in the Special Enterprise Reserve Fund. Tax revenue, as, as tax revenue is, will be received under this agreement, will be treated as other tax dollars and allocated to the general fund to support ongoing city operations and levels of service. The community service fee and its associated revenues, in particular as we don't know exactly what the amount coming in will be, given the formula needed to compute the community, community service fee, will first be used to make sure that the city's capital reserve fund for our key pieces of infrastructure and properties that we own is sufficiently funded. And so what I'm speaking about here is the building we're in today, the police department, the library, state office building, and some of those other city facilities that we own. And we've been developing capital improvement plans for. And then the last is the guaranteed annual payment and directly coming out of the water master plan work sessions, we'll be reserving that payment to support the needs of the city's master plans in the future with this expressed desire to, you know, mitigating the fee and rate increases that we'll be looking at for our community. For budget implications, these are new revenues, so there's no budget implications to existing city programs and services. But again, as we've been saying over the course of this whole year, is that this is really represents a unique opportunity to make generational type investments in our core infrastructure services, the core services that the city provides to its citizens while mitigating that cost burden to the best of our ability. So this resolution preserves that opportunity to make future decisions on potential funding of special projects and allows those funds to be reserved for those future decisions, but give staff the, the document and that budgetary policy guidance to move forward. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for the city manager?
Yeah, I do. Where, where is the Gorge Recovery Center located?
That's the next topic.
Right. Then on down, why Doofur School District and it didn't include District 21?
Well, all of these items that you're looking at here are the next council item. That's the opioid funding agreement, and I'll cover that in just a minute.
Thank you. I'll ask my questions at that time.
Good.
Any questions pertaining to this? Any more questions, I should say? We've been, I thought the staff has accurately portrayed the wishes of the city council as for the four different buckets, if you will, for the SIP dollars and where they, where they, we plan on putting them. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I see. Okay.
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution 24-030 as presented.
This is Richardson. I'll second.
It's been moved by Council Long and seconded by Council Richardson to pass the resolution establishing a policy for SIP revenues. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 11B is consideration of an intergovernmental funding agreement with Wasco County regarding opioid settlement funds. Mr. Clebs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to ask that Debbie Jones join us on here. I'm going to give a brief summary and be happy to answer questions you may have, but Debbie may be better positioned. See how it goes though.
That's right.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council knows, the city is the recipient of revenues from several different opioid settlement agreements with McKinley Corporation, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and Walmart, and most recently Kroger. As noted in one of the attachments in your staff report, the use of these funds is, is pretty restricted to be used in certain particular ways. And so what we did in partnership with Wasco County, who's also the recipient of some of these settlement dollars, is formed and used an opioid task force made up of various members. I believe our police captain serves on that task force to review and come up with different ways we could make best use of these funds to the benefit of our community. Ultimately, what occurred is that a request for proposals was put out to solicit different proposals and how these funds could be used in alignment with their requirements, including in your packet are five different proposals, Norcore, Youth Think, the Gorge Recovery Center, Doofur School District, and the Next Door, Inc. These were the entities that submitted a response to that RFP process. And so to utilize both the city's funds and Wasco County's to support these different endeavors, we're looking at this intergovernmental funding agreement to transfer those funds over to the county for those uses and their, and to have Wasco County take on the bulk, if not all of the administrative duties associated with the use of these funds. One thing I wanted to note is that the city's share of these opioid funds will be restricted to the programs that are within the city limits. So for example, the Doofur School District proposal will be funded entirely from the Wasco County share. So the city's share of these settlement dollars will, in essence, stay within the city limits. And so I'll be looking to have your approval for this IFA with Wasco County as presented. And with that summary, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have or see if Debbie has any additional context you'd like to add. There is a brief description of each, each of the proposals, again, included in your packet after the IFA, after the IFA and the guidance on how those funds can be used.
Debbie, would you like to introduce yourself?
Debbie Jones. I'm the Prevention Specialist for Wasco County and also serve as Wasco County's Overdose Prevention Coordinator.
Any questions for the city manager or Ms. Jones?
One of my questions was answered. The other one, Gorge Recovery Center. I'm not familiar.
I defer to Debbie on that one.
Yes, that is actually a new nonprofit that has opened just within probably the last year. They did receive, I believe, and I'm not perfect on, on the amount, but I believe over $2 million from the state. Yes, so that will be followed into, I don't believe they've settled on their exact location yet. And again, if they are not within the city limits, those areas as said, that money won't would, would not, it would have to go through the county's part. And that's the same way as far as the Next Door. I know they serve in both Wasco and Hood River, and we've made sure, and it will be stipulated in, within their contract that services have to be in with this area.
I'm familiar with this group. It comes down, an open opioid settlement, what was the basis of a settlement? What did the pharmaceuticals, what did, what was the infraction? Why did they settle this claim?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
I can jump in. You know, we've, we've been, I think I presented the first one or maybe most of them, as Matthew mentioned at the beginning of the staff report, with Johnson &amp; Johnson and Walmart and Tiva, all of the rest of these pharmaceutical distributors or manufacturers. It's part of a much larger than the city of the Dawls type of situation. It's, yeah, it's a national situation. And so a number of different jurisdictions sued these manufacturers and they sort of all taken the same sort of settlement process. The first one was so effective, and they're being sued primarily for their role in contributing to the opioid epidemic. So, you know, the pharmacies were lumped in there because there was this allegation that they either knew or should have known some of the harm that they were causing when they'd get the same patient coming in, distributing narcotics from different doctors and they didn't have any alarm bells go off. And so there's, you know, and then the manufacturers themselves were brought in for different reasons. But all in all, the money is, as Matthew mentioned, extremely restricted. The uses are very specific. They have to be used for opiate epidemic abatement. And so it's not like this money can be spent on really anything at all other than that. So.
That makes it clear. Thank you.
One thing, Commissioner McGlaughlin, to add with it, so the, the state receives 45%, cities and counties have 55%. So there, we, in doing this work, we looked at what the state had done, and they were really looking at the continuum of care. This is the first time that prevention was on equal standing as, as harm reduction, recovery, and treatment. And so we followed that within our process. We worked very closely with the National Opioid Resource Network to have them actually do technical assistance. I believe, Matthew, you were on one of those calls to make sure we were following all those rules. We wanted to make sure we got this right from the get-go because the Department of Justice is who oversees these. So, and they are looking, I, I fill out a report and then I think this will come through more as this gets finalized to be able to say on an annual basis what those dollars were exactly spent on, and we have to justify that they fall within those abatement strategies.
I understand how the monies can be used in Youth Think for prevention. What about Norcore?
Norcore is actually going to be using that for M O, medical assisted treatment. And so it, that is one of the abatement strategies as far as getting individuals, especially in a incarcerated setting, the help that they need. And that is kind of going on. And Norcore, I believe, has applied for a different grant, I think even through the C C O. So they'll be able to do some important things for that population.
What about the Doofur, Doofur School District?
That money, they had asked for a larger amount. We felt like it did not fit in within those abatement strategies, and it was supplementing. So they actually, we put theirs down quite a bit, and they'll be using it to purchase a opioid prevention curriculum for their school district.
And Next Door?
Next Door is, boy, you're really like testing me, aren't you? I feel like I'm back in school again, Mr. McGlaughlin. Yeah. No, it was stand up here with your.
Don't do that.
They, if I recall directly, are really looking at the L B G G Q plus population, and they are going to be doing some harm reduction as well as prevention. And our research that we've shown that, especially within the Dawls, is that population by survey data that we can back up is much, they are using at a higher rate. They are more at risk. And so Next Door saw that as a need and already has some programs in place that they'll be able to do some specific outreach to that population.
Thank you. That satisfies my question. You pass.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin, sir.
No other questions, Principal McGlaugh, I mean, Council McGlaughlin? Okay. Anybody else? These funds are, any of the three of you can answer, that are very restricted. I mean, we just couldn't have put this in the city's general fund, for example. We have to use it for specific purposes, which is why we're entering into this agreement. Which leads me to ask, is the, I know the county has opted in, officially opted in, but have they passed the agreement itself or is it on the horizon?
They opted into or approved what the initial proposals were. And then Wednesday, I get the privilege of, where they'll be voting on the IFA. I learned that that's, it's not I G A, it's an IFA. So I learned something. And then we'll be able to start getting the contracts out.
Great. Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I can go ahead and do that, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the IFA with Wasco County as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Council McGlaughlin and seconded by Council Randall to approve the intergovernmental funding agreement with Wasco County. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good job, Ms. Jones.
Thank you. That won't get you out of. One thing, if I could take a moment, I want to, since we do have a police representative, what a great resource that Captain Carrico has been. It's been meeting regularly on there. We have been able to, through the, the opioid prevention grant that we have that's separate from these, we've pretty much been able to use the clearinghouse. And we do not have a problem with getting Narcan to our communities. I was hoping to catch our chamber person because we are, we'd like to think about doing a training for all of the businesses, making sure they have a Narcan emergency rescue pack. We'll be working with the school districts and doing some specific outreach with parents and youth to make sure that they understand what's really going on with the supplies. Now you're going to hear more about Carfentanil, which is the newest, it's much more, more potent than fentanyl, and it's even a smaller amount is needed. So the more we can do and educate and so that if there's anything within your individual service groups or like you have more information, we're prepared to provide that. One of the fun things that we did do, we had the Gorge Academy, which is our hair, beauty, massage group, and they asked, and we were able to train 30 of their people that are going through their school, and they wanted to know, you know, hey, we are out and about, we want to be prepared so we can help our fellow citizens. So there's some neat cooperative things happening, and I appreciate the cities helping that be, and this is a big first step in having that. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, item 11C is consider the adoption of the Mill Creek Watershed Forest Stewardship Plan. Mr. Anderson?
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, members of council. In March of this year, the city was awarded a $150,000 grant from a coalition of state and federal agencies known as the Drinking Water Provider Partnership. The grant was to fund the development of a 20-year management plan for the city-owned lands within the Dawls Municipal Watershed. U.S. Forest Service is administering the grant. The final plan has been completed, and I'm here tonight to read the entire 120-page document to you. But it's here for council's consideration for adoption tonight. In the process, the city contracted with a firm called Springboard Forestry to develop the plan. Springboard is a certified forest management consultant that was actually recommended to the city by staff from the Oregon DEQ and from the Conservation Fund. And as a reminder, the Conservation Fund is the entity who is partnering with the city to help acquire funding to purchase the last 3,500 acres or so of land within the Dawls Municipal Watershed. The city also contracted with a firm located in Lisle called Skookum Resource Management to conduct the field surveys and the timber stand inventories as part of the plan's development. Management plan, called a stewardship plan, summarizes the city's management objectives for the city-owned forested lands within the watershed to protect water quality and promote healthy, fire-resilient forests. It's intended to guide future decision-makers in the management of the Dawls watershed. It describes existing forest conditions on city-owned lands and provides a 10-year recommended operations plan. The plan also provides information supporting the city's acquisition of the Arrowhead Ranch properties. That's the 3,000-plus acres parcel that I previously mentioned from Lupin Forest, which is an association of the Conservation Fund. And that's a project for which the city has entered into an option agreement, and we're currently seeking funding. Information from this plan can be used to evaluate the feasibility of implementing a carbon credit program, which could possibly be a future source of revenue to the city. The budget implications, there are no immediate budget implications with the associated adoption of the Mill Creek Watershed Forest Stewardship Plan. The plan identifies future watershed management projects, which can both generate revenue and require funding, to inform the development of future city budgets. If adopted, the plan will be used to support an application of $675,000 grant to partially fund the purchase of the Arrowhead Ranch properties from Lupin Forest. And information from the plan will be used to explore opportunities to implement the carbon credit program, which I previously mentioned. With that, it's staff's recommendation that the city council move to adopt the Mill Creek Watershed Forest Stewardship Plan.
Question is for the Public Works Director.
This seems familiar. Have you brought this before us?
I brought it to you when we were applying, providing a summary of some grants that we had applied for and some projects that were underway in the watershed.
Year or two ago?
No, since March.
Page 18, there's a map. I don't see where the Arrowhead Ranch, is that on this map?
It is not specified. It's pretty much the white area just above the hashed area. Most of that is the Arrowhead Ranch. The very last, the maps at the very end of the plan identify the Arrowhead Ranch property, and it kind of zoomed in on them there.
Okay.
Pages 118 and 119.
118 and 119, I got it. Okay.
I guess just for, I mentioned that we'll be using this information. The grant that we submitted last week is intended to provide 25% of the funding for that purchase, $675,000. And that's through the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, OWEB. The Conservation Fund is, at the same time, applying for a $2 million grant through the U.S. Forest Services Forest Legacy Program to provide the other 75% of the funding. So if everything comes together, you know, the hope is that the city's going to be able to acquire these properties with virtually no expenditure of city funds or very little expenditure of city funds.
Like that.
And how many acres is the Arrowhead?
There's a total of 30,640 some acres. There's actually a mistake in the option agreement. They list for 3,400 acres, but they missed one parcel when they were adding up the total. So 3,642 acres, I believe, is the total.
Great. It's quite a nice piece of work here.
Got pretty pictures, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. I like that. Okay, is there a motion? Council Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say I strongly support this, and props to Dave and Public Works and the folks putting this together. It's a good complement to our water master plan to be able to control some of the source property and essentially help control our own destiny in that way. So I am glad to move to adopt the Mill Creek Watershed Forest Stewardship Plan.
Is there a second?
Oh, McLaughlin will second.
It's been moved by Council Richardson and seconded by Council McLaughlin to adopt the Mill Creek Watershed Forest Stewardship Plan. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11D is consideration of a special ordinance accepting real property on West Sixth Street for public street purposes. Mr. Hanson, our Deputy Public Works Director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. City has been working for several years to acquire properties that would allow for the widening of the West Sixth Street extending from Snipes Streets to Husstetler. This was the project that Mr. McKay brought to you earlier, and he discussed these properties that we have been working on. In fact, right up until right before this meeting, Mr. Kerr and I were on the phone with one of the property owners, ensuring that he was aware and in support of the project. And again, after extensive negotiations, property owners have tentatively agreed to dedicate portions of their real property to the city in exchange for frontage improvements, benefiting the remainder of their properties that will be constructed during the upcoming West Sixth Street widening project. Jonathan, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point?
Yeah, that's, that sounds good. So this is, this item is in support of the earlier action item awarding the contract for the West Sixth Street expansion. As Eric just mentioned, this has come down to the wire for us just coordinating with the real property owners. A map, which I think does a pretty great job of explaining this entire situation, is on page 56. And if you just hop on GIS or look at this map, you can sort of get the idea here that the highlighted portions of these privately owned, at the moment, real properties seem to be a budding out into West Sixth Street, so we're just going to be exchanging right-of-way for those private properties. We did have a preliminary title report come in very recently about, I don't know, high powers ago, which indicates some additional owners. And so actually, council's alternative that are listed on page 55 of 72, I'd like to recommend the council go with alternative number two. And I have some modified language to put on the record and for council to understand here. So when I was preparing these agreements and for the ordinance, I was operating under the assumption that the GIS information was more or less up to date, and it more or less is. There was a real property transfer that just happened a few months ago that hasn't been reflected on the GIS records, and that's okay. And that's why we get title reports. And so the minor modifications that I'll be recommending are to replace all references in these documents, wherever you see the name Sandra Dean, to instead reference the following. Bested LLC, that's B-E-S-T apostrophe D-L-L-C, a Washington limited liability company, and Hans and Donna Winterlick. Bested LLC is a LLC that is owned and operated entirely by Sandra Dean, and Hans and Donna Winterlick are her silent partners. So they have a real property interest in the land. And that wasn't coming up in a very routine title search, but thankfully Wasco Title delivered us some great work product very quickly here, and I want to say thank you on the record for them as well. And so with those modifications, and we had confirmation from Ms. Dean earlier today that it's no problem that Hans and Donna are fully on board. And as Eric mentioned, right until about 5:00 on the dot, we were finalizing matters with the property owner, the owner of the Dawls LLC. And everything appears to be in order. And so, again, my recommendation is for council to make a motion, not the highlighted one, staff recommendation, but actually underneath it, to make minor modifications and move to adopt it as amended by title only. Again, replacing all references in these documents in both the special ordinance and the associated attachments that are just referencing Sandra Dean to include instead Bested LLC, a Washington limited liability company, and Hans and Donna Winterlick.
Is that part of the motion, what you, the last part of that, which is to read the Bested LLC and the Wonderlicks?
That would be my recommendation, and council can move to make, you know, move to adopt this special ordinance as described by the city attorney. By title only. Finally, I will note that it appears Ms. Amory is on line, and I was working with Jill on this for the past couple of weeks. Her office really assisted in making sure that the legal descriptions were A-OK for us, and I think she sent me the all-clear last Monday night, or maybe it was Tuesday. And so.
Okay, is there a motion to go with number two here as far as the recommendation as described by the city attorney?
I'll make a motion to make minor modifications as presented by the city attorney and then move to adopt special ordinance number 24-065 as amended by title only.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to just say, I think you said 065? I just want to put it for the record at 605.
605, yes, sorry. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Council Long and seconded by Council Randall to make modifications to the special ordinance number 24-605 as amended and as described by the city attorney. Is there any more discussion or questions?
Well, I have a quick one that in your report, you said that you were going to have exchange of frontage improvements, and then I heard right-of-way exchange. Frontage improvements would include?
Frontage improvements in this project include additional paving for the widening, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and stormwater improvements.
That's what I wondered. Okay, thank you.
Were there, is there anyone who would like to have the ordinance read in its entirety?
No.
Would the city clerk please read the ordinance by title only?
Special ordinance number 24-605, a special ordinance accepting real property on West Sixth Street for the public street.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Yes.
All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Or raise your hand.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
The city council of the City of the Dawls will now meet in executive session in accordance with ORS 192.6602H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. We expect to return to open session in about 20 minutes. Are we going in the?